There we go.
You're recording?
Yep, got it.
Emory, can you enable share screen on yours for everybody?
Okay, hold on. I don't have my teenager here to show me how to do that.
I just learned how to maybe do this.
One participant can share at a time. Multiple participants can share. Yep, you should guys should be all set. It says multiple participants can share simultaneously.
Are we ready to go?
There you go, Mike Morgansy. Okay, how's that?
Can you, can you guys see that plan?
Yes, I do.
Perfect.
All right, good. I don't feel like I'm in the Blair Witch Project anymore.
Nope.
All right, shall we get started? All right, in that case, let's start with the Pledge of Allegiance. My pledge allegiance. All right, number three, seeing of alternates where we got a quorum, we're all set there. Number four, the CEO report.
Good evening, everyone. Just a really quick report for you this evening. The cease and desist order to 19B Street was sustained by the zoning Board of Appeals last Thursday evening. So we'll be monitoring that operation there and hopefully, I'm really hoping that we have a plan coming forward from the from the owner of the property, you know, the property there for April. Twenty New Haven Road Roosters. I was out to the facility today. He is moving along. It is a little bit slower with the snow that we had. I reposted the ceased and deceased for retail operations are sales only at this point. He's allowed to do his site work and continue on that. Hopefully, we can get a certificate of zoning compliance. Hopefully, I'm hoping by the end of the month, if not the first couple of weeks of April, he knows he's not to open up retail operations at this point. We've had a large influx of pools coming in. There's sheds being put up. I guess the stimulus package is at least enticing people to do something with their properties. There's been some houses and other approvals going on. It's been quite busy down here. I'll entertain any questions that you may have.
No questions? In that case, let's move on to public comment. Anybody from the public have any comments? Any comments from the public? Any public comments? Hearing none, let's move forward to six approval of the regular meeting minutes from February last month. Everybody a chance to look at them. Does anybody have any comments, corrections, changes? I have none.
None.
All right, entertain a motion to approve them.
I'll make a motion to approve them.
Second? Second?
Yeah.
Okay, all in favor?
Hi.
Opposed? None? So carried. Not going to do public comment again. All right, number 12 Bank Street. Attorney Thomas?
Yes, thank you very much Attorney Dominic Thomas. Cohen and Thomas, 315 Main Street Derby, Connecticut, representing the applicant Lon Syla, who's the owner of 12 Bank Street and Michael, if I can, can I share a screen with the one that I have because I put some more stuff on the site plan in response to Keith's comments?
Absolutely.
I will try to. Which I've got to find it.
Down in the middle of your browser, it should pick up.
Can you see the, well, first of all, this is, can you see the letter on the screen?
I got the letter, man.
Yeah, yeah, this is a letter I submitted today after my discussions with Keith concerning the, one of the comments that he made about an inland's wetlands report on the property pursuant to your 9.3.3. So based on the, as I said in there, based on the the fact that this property was developed long ago, is almost entirely impervious and building and pavement in the downtown area, there is no indication of any wetlands. Whether you look at the GIS or anything in the downtown area. So I requested that the commission waive the requirement of the statement from a certified soil scientist with respect to the property. The site plan that I have with my notes on it were the response to add the parking to the site. So before I get to that, I'm I am confident that you are all familiar, but in my presentation, you know, familiar with this building, it's a building that for many years of my, almost 50 years of practice, 40 years of practice in Connecticut, I've been in and out of when it was the law firm for several attorneys, including Prescott Mace, Steve Kulas, Fred Stanek, and Milo Alshuler. So I've been in and out of it. And obviously, Mr. Kulas moved out and Prescott Mace sold the building and my client, Mr. Lance Syla purchased it. And what he intends to do, as it says in my application, is to convert 500 square feet of the lower, the lower level by enclosing the front porch into that 500 square feet into retail space. Behind it would be a, a one bedroom apartment. And then on the second and third floors would be two more apartments that would be multi-level. In other words, there's two bedroom apartments splitting the up floors and I'll put the floor plan on later with access from the second floor to the third floor. As a result of this, right in this location here, which is why a site plan had to be filed, he was changing the site. So in this location, there is a proposed set of stairs to comply with the fire code requirements. As you can see, there are seven onsite spaces. There is a an access that'll be one way in and one way out as it was used previously in the, in the past. I added the parking requirements. Parking for the three residential units requires six spaces under your regulations and seven spaces are provided. So there are the required six spaces. Parking for the 500 square foot of retail, it's claimed as an exemption for 14.7. We do have one off-street parking space that is provided that would probably be used for one of the employees, if not the only employee in the 500 square foot. But there is plenty of street parking, but also plenty of public parking. So I believe they qualify under 4.7. The other thing I want to point out that I discovered today, and I just want to point it out in going through the when I was following Keith's thing, I, you know, I had gone through and done the parking. However, today I went back and redid it and looked at the setbacks and everything. And I know you've changed your regulations, especially your downtown recently. And I did note that Fred in his, in his zoning chart has minimum side yard eight feet, minimum area 25 feet, both of which were compliant with. But in fact, you changed it, at least according to the regulations, the most current regulations I saw to five feet in the center business district. So that the, they're actually both, they're still compliant, they're both more compliant, but certainly we'll correct that. If you see fit to approve this, we will correct the, the chart. In addition, correcting the little square footage. This is pre-existing.
What about the lot frontage, the lot frontage?
The lot frontage is three, well, just under three feet, pre-existing legal, not conforming.
Can you bring that up on the screen? Can you bring that up on the screen?
Yeah, the lot frontage is, as it says here, is 57.08 feet. The required is 60 feet under your regulation.
All right, and you come up with seven spaces because you're counting the one in the street, correct?
There's seven spaces behind.
Okay, I see it, yep.
So there are, for the residential people, they have the six spaces, they will have, six of the spaces will have to be reserved for the apartments pursuant to your regulations. So you have sufficient off-street parking for the number of apartments.
It shows the third floor as an attic. Is the roof line going to change? Is there, are they going to change the roof line?
No, the, the roof line is remaining the same. I go back to the floor plan. And as you can see, the second floor, the two apartments, there is stairs leading up from the apartments to the second level of the apartment, each apartment, but the floor, the, the, other than the stairway, okay, other than the stairway that's being added, and Mr. Syla is, is on this Zoom, so he can respond. But other than the stairway that's being added, there's nothing changing with respect to the footprint.
So that would change the roof line?
I can't tell you if the
Okay.
I'll have to ask Mr. Syla. Mr. Syla, are you on?
Yeah, I'm on.
Okay, will the stairway change the roof line on the side?
No, no, let me just understand you. What do you mean with the roof line? I'm not getting the
Are you gonna, are you gonna do any modifications to a roof of the house?
No, 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 not whatsoever.
Because it shows it as an attic. I see the third floor is actually an attic. I'm just wondering.
Yeah, that's, that's where we're trying to add, to add some bedrooms upstairs because there's plenty of room and then just add the stairs to go from second floor to the third floor to the attic.
So you have, you have the ceiling height in the attic?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, that answered my question. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, so I believe, you know, the, the use is, as I was explaining to you, are both site plan uses permitted, permitted uses in the CBD zone. The, and I believe it fits in with what is downtown and as you're familiar with and I'm familiar with, next door to it, in the building next door to it, 16 Bank Street, we have apartments, obviously many more, but we have apartments above and retail below as it circles onto Columbus Circle. You have other apartments you approved on Columbus Circle and along in the area of, of Main Street, you have retail and you have some residential on the other levels. So I believe it complies with your downtown purpose. And the other thing is, it's a pretty unique, not unique, but it's a pretty interesting repurposing of this building, which had been a professional office for a number of years. And actually, what I can tell you is given the amount of traffic, when they had depositions in certain cases and the parking lot was full with the employees in the back, this is probably a less intense use with respect to parking and vehicles. Again, I, I think it complies with all the zoning. I would hope you see fit to approve it. I'm here to answer any questions, as is Mr. Syla, who answered it, and Fred D'Amico, who drew the site plan. Okay?
Thank you, Nate. Any commissioners have any, any questions?
Can you bring up the floor plan?
The second floor or the first floor?
The second, and the second floor in the attic.
Right up, right up.
I, it's not on my screen.
Oh, it's not?
Yeah. I have, I have your, your printout right here. I have your page right here.
Can anybody else see it?
Now I got it. Now I have it, yep.
Okay.
What are the little squares with the arrows?
These here?
Yep, what, what's this here? Yep.
I, I don't know, Mr. Syla, did you? Can you?
I believe that's, I believe that's where the windows are.
Okay.
Yeah, that's where the windows are.
Because I'm just wondering if you're changing the exterior of the building at all?
No, no, not at all. No.
Well, other than the staircase.
Adding a staircase, yeah, but not, not, not the, not the
So then you would be changing the exterior of the building?
Right, this is in the site plan, you could see it, it's right here.
Yeah, I got it right here. Yep, I got it. It just clipped off on me again, but I have it here. I have it on my paper. Okay, that's fine. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Keith, were all the comments on your March 3rd addressed, we'll get to the waiver in a minute, but the last three, to your satisfaction?
Yes, yes, Joe, all three of them. Yes.
Anybody else have any comments or questions on that?
I should, I did, you just reminded me, I missed something that the area here, if you look currently, the area in this location on either side of the building is landscaped. My client intends on keeping it landscaped on either side of the stairs.
Yes, that's correct.
It's the only non-paved area, non-impervious area on the side.
And the parking lots six and seven, those are not existing right now, correct? Are they existing, the six and seven? Or six is and seven isn't?
People park there. You know what I mean? I don't know if they were lined, but certainly people, you know, when I was going there, I would park. People would
Yeah, it looks like there's plenty of room to park, sure.
Yeah, if those spaces were full. The interesting thing, by the way, for those of you, Joe may know this, is Prescott had a habit of parking his Mercedes coupe right here. So then everybody had to go off the other way, but
All right, any other questions?
May I? This is Commissioner Peck.
I'm sorry?
This is Richard Beckman. Comment?
Sure.
So I have no major concerns about this, except for the fact that
Are we taking public comments right now?
No, this is
Oh, he's a commissioner, I'm sorry, excuse me.
I'm a commissioner.
Okay, I'm sorry.
When, when asked, when, when asked to provide feedback on what squares with arrows and those items mean, I find it interesting that the statements are, I believe it's this. If you're the person who's involved with the plans, you should know what those items are. So for me, it's, it's these, I believe there's this leaves gray area there in my mind. That's just a comment that's not necessarily
I don't know, and, and my client had difficult, I don't think he's on other than audio. So I don't think he can see this. I don't know if he has the floor plan in front of him. He was, I had sent him a link so that he could link up to the Zoom. However, it didn't work. So Lon, are you there? Do you have the floor plan in front of you that you sent over to me that I submitted?
Mr. Peck, why don't you ask a specific question of the applicant?
Lon, can you hear me?
Yeah, yeah, I got it now, yeah.
Okay, so the commissioner, Commissioner Peck has asked about, you know, you know, when you were responding. So going to the second floor and the attic, the rectangles with the arrows pointing out. What is that?
Well, that's a window.
Those are windows.
Windows, yes, yes, that's correct.
On either side.
So you drew, you drew these plans yourself, sir?
Yeah, I mean, I had some gentleman help me who does construction, actually, you know, and
No, that's fine. He should have just marked in there a window or something, which would be fine. It's just a little, you know, out of the norm, I want to say. I don't know what to say about it, but it's fine. It's fine. Your, your explanation was fine.
All right, thank you, sir.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Nesteriak has his hand up.
Sorry, go ahead, Brian. Typically with architectural drawings, a box like that with an arrow means a roof and the arrow is pointing down the pitch of the roof.
Correct, so that would affect the roof line of the building.
Can I make, Mr. Chairman, may I make another comment?
Sure.
The only thing I have concern here is, is on this second floor, you could see on the right side of the, of the building, you have a stairwell going down. And that goes down, obviously, to the first floor. That is not shown on the site plan.
That's correct, yeah.
They're showing a stairwell in the back of that bump out. So I don't believe that the architectural drawings here are in sync with the site plan.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Baldwin has his hand up.
Go ahead, Mr. Baldwin.
Um, yeah, just to elaborate, pick up a little bit what, what Brian had just said. The, that building there, these drawings might not be syncing up with the with the, with the site plan. There is a side porch on that building, which I believe is represented by the arrow on the left-hand side of the second floor and as well as the front porch. So you, to get back to Mr. Peck's question, you might want to revisit the answer of these are windows because that's probably not correct. So it's not that this is a big deal, but let's, let's all get the accurate information out there, okay?
Yeah, I'm just concerned because of the location of building to, to conform with the downtown area more, you know what I mean? And if we have a better accurate drawing, absolutely, it's a good idea.
Well, Brian, Jim, are you suggesting that we need to have these plans revised or improved or?
No, I'm not suggesting that. I just want to make sure that the representation, so we have a chance right now to just clear this all up because two commissioners are asking questions and I do not believe on their they're getting a correct representation of the plan that's being presented. It's, these are, these are not gigantic problems, they're more building details because what's going to happen with the residential, they're going to be required the two means of egress. That's why you're seeing some stairways. And they'll be cleaned up on the actual architectural renderings or the construction drawings. So you're probably not looking at a major problem, but my point is, they're not, they're not windows as they're as they're depicted on this drawing. They're not windows.
Yeah, I agree with you, Jim. It's not a big problem. It's just a matter of drawing it right.
Well, not, not to downplay our, our role here, but are these things that are going to be dealt with at the, at the point in which building permits are pulled? In other words, do we need to overcomplicate ourselves here?
Mr. Chairman, I, they, I can assure you they'll be dealt with at the, at the review of the Fire Marshal's Office and the Building Department. So as far as the overall structure, you could probably stay a little bit more concentrated on the site plan itself as it pertains to our zoning regulations. But I don't think you'll see a severe or a, a real big modification to the building.
Okay, so you don't see any, does anybody see any reason then why we couldn't approve this tonight after we dealt with the waiver issue on the on the
Brian, do you see a problem with any of the sign or
The only, the only thing I, I think we need to be honest about is, is the parking lot and the seven spaces that are there. There is an exemption that's available in the zoning regulation that allows existing and new buildings to share parking. But if there's seven cars in the back of this, then no one's really able to move. And that's just the reality. If, if someone's parked in seven, then you're not getting into, into six or you're not getting out of six. If someone's parking in all seven, you're not getting out of five. And you might even have a hard time with two, three and four. So there, there is an exemption in there that's allowed by the zoning commission. So I think just, we need to be honest about this and, and realize that they are going to be sharing more parking than, than I think that they're using in that parking lot.
But this site plan is showing seven spots.
It's showing seven spots. It's showing geometrically, they fit seven, 10 by 20 spots or nine by 18 spots.
Under our regs
You can maneuver a suburban who there, you know, when there's seven vehicles in that parking lot is, is
I was gonna say, I was gonna say that too, Brian, seven compact cars, right? You're not gonna get a suburban or a pickup truck or a van or something like that. It'd be a little tougher. I mean, you could do it.
What do our regs require? So I thought our regs required six.
Our regs require two spaces per residential unit and then a certain amount for the retail. So we're clearly underparked, but there is a shared parking exemption that you may allow. It's not necessarily automatically given, in my opinion. But either, either way, let's just say we agree with the seven spots, which is marginal. The circulation on this is going to be a little tough.
Well, the only comment I have to that is, you're absolutely correct. The parking has been difficult in the back, but for my memory, at least for 30 years, the law firm functioned with many times having depositions and other people in closings. And people parked on both sides, similar to here, and people got in and out. And so, I mean, I understand what you're saying, but in downtown areas, when you're repurposing buildings like this, if the commission decides to strictly adhere to parking rules and parking measurements, then you're going to impact the ability to repurpose downtown buildings. Because there are, this one has parking. The majority of them have none.
Yeah, I think I just, I think I just, Mr. Chairman, I like to just say on that parking back there, having cloud snow in that parking lot for over 30 years when it was the previous attorneys. The, the one tight spot in which like Brian made a good point. Usually our regs are nine by 18 spaces. So that, which would require basically from the front of the car, a 36-foot backup area. I don't see a dimension to the back of the parking space, but I can tell you that you do have that. And it's just imperative that the choke points along the side of the building, you know, don't get impacted by any parking. That, that's actually the restricted area of that parking, but it, but I've seen, I've seen myself cars parked in there of a total of eight and they aren't able to maneuver. So this layout looks like it works. I believe Keith and Brian did the, the dimensioning on it, but again, I would say that there is eight, a definite eight spaces back there. And, and to that point, we're, most of our areas downtown don't have any parking at all. So at least this one does give us some relief.
Well, I mean, I'm inclined to unless, unless staff has wants to make a stronger case to not do this, I'm inclined to move
I mean, that makes sense to me. And if that was New York City, you could probably put 10 or 12 spaces back there. You know what I mean? If you're in the city, you know what I mean? Like Dominic said, you know, we are downtown. So you, you know, it is going to be a little bit more narrow, so that looks good to me.
All right, any other, any other questions, comments from anybody? I think procedurally, we should probably approve the waiver first and then we can, then we can deal with the site plan. Is that the way we should do it?
Yes.
Say something?
I'm sorry, I'm on a phone right now, so yes, I would say yes.
Okay. All right. I have no problem with the, with the waiver. Does anybody else?
Just to be clear with the waiver again, could somebody read it, please?
Read what?
Waiver.
Mr. Chairman, if you still like, I can read it for you. Dear Mr. Chairman Zio, per my conversation with the Commission's Planner,
Dear Mr. Chairman Zio, per my conversation with the Commission's Planner, Keith Rosenfeld, I am requesting the Commission waive the requirement where in nine point three point three of the zoning regulations that an applicant provide a statement from a certified soil scientist that there are no wetlands on the property. The above captioned property is a long ago developed parcel that is almost entirely building and pavement in the downtown area. There is no indication of any wetlands on the parcel or any parcels in the general area of the downtown where twelve Bank Street is located. Further, the GIS map data indicates no wetlands. Thank you for your attention. Very truly, here is Dominic Thomas Jr.
If there was ever a parcel that we would think would be suitable for this waiver, it would seem to me to be this one.
Mr. Chairman, as the enforcement officer for the wetlands, I would concur with Mr. Thomas's letter.
I, I'd like to make a motion to approve, um, I just signed myself up, no, uh, to approve the, the waiver as read by Mike Maragansky.
Second.
Three point three. Okay, do you have a second?
Second.
Are all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
I recuse myself.
Okay. So passed. Um, now with respect to the site plan, we can move on to the site plan. If there are no other comments or questions on the site plan, I'll entertain a, a motion with respect to that. Anybody?
The only question I have of the site plan is because of the stairwells going off, is that, is that, that's changing the site plan, actually? Um, Jim, your comments on that? I said, we could get over those hurdles, it's not that big of a deal.
I, I believe the stairwells are shown, the stairway is shown on the site plan. I think it may be mis- mis- labeled, I think it's in the area where it's going to be on the site plan, it's mis-dedicated on the, uh, floor plans, I believe. I can pull it back up again.
Okay, I got you. I see what you're saying. So the floor plan is, okay, I got you. I- if the floor plan matches the site plan, then I have no problem with it.
Okay. Anybody else? If not, let's, uh, entertain a motion on this. Anybody? Nobody wants to fight, to, uh, propose a motion to accept or deny this application? And I'll, I'll make a motion to approve the application as submitted with the waiver under nine point three point three. Do we have a second?
I'll second with the condition that the stairwells are not outside the site plan as shown here. I don't know how to explain that one.
Why don't we do this? Let me, let me re-
Yeah, rephrase that, yes. Yeah, that makes sense. Yeah.
Um, Keith, I can just pull that, pull that motion, right? There's no re- procedurally, I, I need to do anything else and just, uh, not, we won't, not act, we don't have a second, so.
I'll second it if you amend it, saying that stairwells don't intrude.
Yeah, I just wanna make sure we're not doing something wrong.
Of the existing, of the existing building.
You're right. I would say that's your motion.
All right, I'm gonna fi- I, I will then make a motion that we approve the site plan as proposed with the waiver, uh, section nine point three point three, provided that with the expressed condition that the site plan be revised to reflect the accurate location of the staircase. Is there any particular staircase? Are there two staircases or one?
I think it's just the one that's in question. Let's go with any, any protruding structure, any protruding structure from the building.
Uh, any, well, why don't we keep it, the staircase is what you had a question about, why don't we just keep this as-
Okay, that's fine.
Any staircase.
Well. I'll second, I'll second it.
Are all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any, any opposed?
I recuse myself.
Opposed?
One opposed? One, two in favor, one opposed, any abstentions?
I recuse myself.
You recuse, that's right. All right, so we've passed a two to one then. Right? We, that was a two to one vote, is that correct? Did I get that right?
Yes.
We who's there can-
Two, one, two, one, one.
Two, one, one. All right. Thank you, Mr. Thomas.
Thank you very much.
Correspondence, move on to number nine. Anything, any correspondence to review?
I have no correspondence.
Uh, Mr. 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 Chairman, we do have, um, I don't know if you want to pick it up under chorus, well, yeah, let's pick it up under correspondence from staff. Um, we are set to have a meeting, um, with myself, the town planner Keith, uh, Brian Nesteriak, and, um, at one point will ask, um, I believe the first selectman's on this call, will, will probably ask maybe for a representative, uh, maybe Rory or someone. Um, we're just gonna put the final touches on the revisions that have been worked on for the zoning regs that your board could, uh, um, will be deliberating. We should have those for you, we hopefully, next month, for your consideration. So, um, that's one thing that we want to get out there. Keith has done a complete, uh, great job with the rewrite. It's incorporated all the comments of staff for the past year as well as, uh, other, um, uh, members of, uh, the community, um, you know, that works, you know, for the town. Um, a little bit of strategic planning, uh, input in there and as well as some economic development, um, planning as well. So, um, we look definitely to have that to you um, for your next meeting. And, um, I don't know if Keith, do you have anything to add to that that you want to, uh, it's probably a good time to, uh, bring it up now, in case any of the commission members want us to, to consider anything else before it gets to them?
Um, excuse me? Well, I would say that you, we're gonna attach the old set of plans to the new set, um, just to show you that it is going to be a, or is a complete overhaul of the, uh, of the zoning regulations, using the best of what we've had before, uh, utilizing new information and new, new standards and new, uh, benchmarks that other communities have, have done. And, uh, really taking, uh, Seymour into this, uh, new century, this new normal that we have and, and trying to really allow for both conservation and development to occur in a growth managed way and, uh, and, uh, hopefully this will be enabled. It will be a good facilitator for that. So, we're very excited.
Do you think you'll, because the way I envisioned this happening, we, we get a copy, we look at it and we maybe have a meeting possibly two on it where the commissioners, we can all ask questions, give input before we schedule a public hearing.
I would, I would think the thing that we'd like to do is, uh, have you take a look and then, uh, schedule a couple, uh, workshops, both, uh, ones that are geared towards the commission and possibly, uh, adversely, we're gonna have to have a public hearing. So we'll have for that as well, so, but a couple, uh, uh, zoning workshops, zoning commission workshops and, uh, push this and, uh, look at it, review it and, uh, and go from there.
Right?
It's very exciting.
Yes, we've been working on it for a while and the workshop sounds like a really good idea.
Yeah. Mm-hmm.
Well, I might, I might add that, um, we, we had a little taste of it when your commission, uh, had, um, gone through the RC, uh, three regulations that, um, took a little bit, but, uh, eh, for informational purposes, that did bring us a, uh, very large project to one of our sites on Route thirty-four. Um, we've got a great developer that's, uh, gonna invest some, uh, quite a bit of money in that. They're in their design phase now. It should be, you should be seeing that probably within three to four months. But, uh, that's a result from the work that you did, um, on the RC three zone. So, you know, it's a, it's a good, good indicator that, uh, this is gonna be good for the, uh, overall, for the town.
That's very good news.
Excellent. Anything else? If not, I'll entertain a motion on item number ten.
Make a motion to adjourn?
Any second?
No, second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and opposed? As so carried. We'll see you all next month. Perhaps.
Take care, everybody.
Glad we all connected.
Good night.
Yep.